Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00. On the agenda, there is an addition, 12-1, Loop Off Magazine, and 18-1, Legal Issue. Is there any other additions? If someone will move the agenda, please.
I will.
Counsel Lebrun, all in favor, carry. I'd like to welcome Staff Sergeant Michael Lukinow to the council meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll just start off with just a few stats comparatively from last year. We had 190 prisoners in November of this year as compared to last year's 69. So I think there's still some of that residual COVID. There was still an issue with some of the files being down or the prisoner numbers being down. To date, we've had 2,211 prisoners by the end of November. And last year, at the same time, we had 1,350. We've seen an increase. And the current numbers are more in line with pre-COVID numbers. And then our monthly calls for service, we had, and this is in high-level specifics, so 432 files in the month of November. In November of 2021, there was 235 files. To date, we've had 5,892 files in the town at high level. And last year, there was 4,460 more. So we've seen an increase. Our crime reduction unit, this, in November, they had 20 files that they looked after as the primary investigators, resulting in four charges. They did five judicial authorizations, so that could include production orders, search warrants, drug warrants. They executed two arrest warrants for outstanding people that are out on arrest warrants. Active drug trafficking files, they've got three still on the go. There was a failed hit-and-run in Paddle Prairie. Person was on the highway and got struck by multiple vehicles. That investigation's ongoing, and the investigation took quite a few turns, drastic turns, so we had to spend quite a bit of time on that, which is why we pulled them into it. They have a little bit more flexibility. And to assist us, we were able to get the Western Alberta District General Investigation Section to come up. So four of their members came up to give us a hand for two days. And we also had the criminal code investigative team for traffic offenses. Two of their members came up as well for two days and gave us a hand. So it was much appreciated. Crew executed a Section 11 CDSA warrants of Controlled Drugs and Substances Act on residents in high levels, a result of hours of surveillance and witness cooperation on male offenders possession of both controlled substances for the purpose of trafficking. Crew members conducting proactive patrols of bars in high level. Member located high-risk island offender intoxicated, subject under conditions to not be in the town at high level. He was arrested and held for a bail hearing. And he was subsequently released by a justice. Constable Gerard assisted in a stabbing in Meander River. Victim was stabbed in the face by his brother. The accused was located and arrested. And then members brought to robbery in Pushy River. Accused robbed the victim and broke into his trailer and stole a firearm. Constable Gerard spent shift with police dog services attempting to locate the accused and was not successful, but spent quite a bit of time on that for that. And then just looking at some of our stats for the month. Traffic accidents, we had 14. All the traffic offenses, there was 46. We had the one criminal code traffic offense, which would be failing to stop after an accident resulting in a death, and that was the one that crew was helping with. We had eight impairments. We had Constable Ryan Kazmar actually has 26 impaired investigations this year. Just he alone has got those, and that's a pretty impressive number. So he's met the threshold for a Alberta provincial award, and he'll be going to an award ceremony sometime in the new year. So it's a pretty big accomplishment. And he beat me my first year. I have 24, so he has a little bit of a badge of honor there. Provincial statutes, that includes things like Lickar Act, 911 Act. We had 83 files. Miscellaneous criminal codes, which would be failure to comply with undertakings or orders resisting disturbing the peace, 47 of those files. Offensive weapons, we had six. Let's see here. Drug enforcement for trafficking, we had eight files. One forcible confinement file. We had robbery, two. Criminal harassment, two. Harassing communications, which is a slightly different one. And uttering threats, eight. One aggravated assault. Four assault with weapon or causing bodily harm. 19 assaults. And one assault on a police officer. Four thefts. On persons, we had three thefts for vehicles. Possession of stolen property, three files. Then we had mischief, so damage to property or obstructed enjoyment of property. We have two of those files. Six frauds. Nine break-in enters. And then well-being checks, 39. So still with people calling in concerned about someone's mental health or children concerned about their well-being, 39 of those files.
All cleared?
They were all cleared, yes. Mental health still continues to be an issue here, as it is in many detachments. We've seen a marked increase, especially during COVID, where people have been secluded from others for a long time, and that's just compounded the mental health issues that were already in place. And we still need some resources to be able to deal with that. And it's not just a high-level issue. It is a province-wide, if not Canada-wide, issue. So we're hoping to get some resources on that. I think I mentioned before, the RPEC team. The RCP has identified that position is ready to go. We're still waiting on the Alberta Health Services side of things. I think we've had those discussions before. Hopefully, at some point, we can get somebody in that position and we can start getting some help with it. And that's really the end of my report. Any questions on anything?
I have one question on the RPEC team. So you have one team. What happens when they need time off?
Then either we will have people working overtime. So what they've done at Peace Rivers, there's the RPEC team there. There is a person, there is a psychiatric nurse, I believe is her actual title. She works in conjunction with a member. And if the member is off, they already have a list of people that are willing to work overtime to fill that position. I don't know what's done on the Alberta Health side of things. We've only seen the emails on what the RCP is doing to backfill that position when that person is off, either for training or leave.
And do they have specific training, the person that takes over?
So they typically, they're the ones that would have the child interviewing courses. I don't think they get a lot of training specifically towards mental health other than what the other members get, either at DEPO or if there's follow-up courses. And usually, like I said, it's the people who have the stepwise interviewing. So they do have some more training than the typical member as far as how to deal with people and the progression of asking questions and just having their contact with them.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? No? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Well, Merry Christmas, by the way.
And a Merry Christmas.
Yes. Thanks for that.
So the November, did you say? November 26th meeting? Any questions, errors? If not, could somebody move to accept?
Number 28.
Number 28?
You said 28.
Oh, did I? Sorry, November 28. Somebody going to?
What, Counsel Lebrun?
No, he said, well, he was correcting me.
I thought there was a meeting I missed, so it's, it's what it is.
I'm moving the meetings.
Deputy Mayor, all in favor, carry. Could someone please move the Staff Sergeant's report? Counsel Welke, all in favor, carry. I emailed my report. Was there any questions? So we were able to, on the Northwest SAR, get the membership down to $1,000. Is everybody fine with that? Okay. And there was an APAC award that was given to the entire Northwest SAR committee. Three members of the APAC, or of Northwest SAR went and received this lovely award. And then they replicated it for every community. So this is ours for high level to be in place of on. But I don't think there's anything that may need.
I'll put a whole minute. Congratulations.
So any other? Could I have someone move my report, then? All in favor, carry. Counselor reports, Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
On December 8th, I attended the same local staff meeting as the mayor. And then on December 9th, the town Christmas staff party. Kudos to all organizers. It was a great time, great meeting. I think everyone enjoyed it themselves. So thank you again for doing all of that.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson?
November 30th, I had the high-level library board meeting. And on November, or sorry, December 9th, I also attended the Christmas party. And I mirror Deputy Mayor's sentiments. It was excellent to be on and all put together. Thank you.
Counsel Jessamyn?
December 9th, I attended the staff and Christmas party and very much enjoyed the event. And yeah, just hats off to everybody that helped put such a great time together. And thanks for all the hard work. Just greatly enjoyed it. And that's it, really?
Thank you. Counsel Lambert?
I have no meetings to report, all right?
Thank you. Counsel Lebrun?
I attended the library, Island Library Board meeting on November 30th and the Christmas party as well on December 9th.
Thank you. Counsel Welke?
December 5th, we had a community futures meeting in person. First one in a couple of years. Not the first meeting, but the first in-person meeting. And just basically got back in touch and reviewed all the loans and things like that. So everything's, everything's going fine. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move the council reports, please? Counsel Anderson, all in favor, carry. Council action list. I had a count, I had a question. Did we not discuss moving the garbage can closer or the dumpster for the seniors?
Yes, we did, Madam Mayor.
Did we do that?
It's helpful.
Okay. I just didn't notice.
That is perfect, because then it's not too obvious.
I think I must, I don't think I drive down that street anymore.
I noticed it, but you're right, when you drive by, then. No, I think the first week, there was complaints and then, yeah, obviously, otherwise.
So Madam Mayor, we are going to make sure it fits through usage there. And then next year, we'll probably put a pencil on it, just to be verified of it.
Okay, thank you.
Complaints from the public. Well, yes.
So, and then my other question was, have we kept Minister Dreschon abreast of our wastewater application?
No, Madam Mayor, we haven't written specifically to move Minister Dreschon on that. We also want to update him on our requests on May 2nd, November 14th as well.
Okay, but we.
We'll do that, we'll do that this week.
Okay.
If it's something for him.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Could I have someone move the report, please, or action list? Counsel Lebrun, all in favor, carry. Events list. Again, my email about the dance. Oh, I thought I sent it to you. Maybe I didn't. Somebody sent me an email wanting the town to put on the Christmas dance. I thought I sent it to you. I probably sent it to myself. I'll resend it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Any others on the upcoming events? If not, could I have someone move it, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor, carry. Monthly report to council. Any questions? Have we submitted again to the green inclusive?
I'll pass it off to Director Rolfe. She's working on that.
Not at this point, no. There's two different streams that we could possibly be eligible for. And the one just opened up for large funds. It opened up last week with a deadline in February 28th. So we'll definitely be submitting for that. And we already started the pre-work with, working with the engineers and the architects we had before, Sahariya Architect, to come up with a different plan, to come to council first. So that's to be, make sure we fit the energy restrictions instead of looking for the exemption. And we possibly could also apply under the indigenous, no, continuous intake. So we're looking at that as well. Minister Carr, that I, do you guys know about? Yeah, you passed away today.
What?
Yesterday.
Today? He was the Perry Provinces Minister. Also, I was thinking with this green grant initiative, is there any way that we could give this to Michael so that he can take it and slap it on Minister Bossino's desk?
Once we get it on.
Since we don't seem to be able to get a meeting with him. He must have staff in 10 dozen.
We have staff, we have done through. Sure, once we get it completed and submitted, we can show them. Madam Mayor, just a little further to that, too. I met with Mr. Asils on Friday, and he's asking his Chief of Counsel to give us a new letter of support for the facility.
Okay. Long with some money.
They are willing to help us in any way possible.
And do we have an update on the annexation, or is that just moving along?
Director Yavon?
Yes, so I'm working on the application right now. There is still a bit of information to compile, to put together. And I'm trying to get another meeting with our representative at the Land and Property Rights Tribunal, just to confirm that there's nothing else outstanding after everything else that I've requested. And our timeline is to have the application at the Committee of Hall Meetings for Town Council and the County in January to review and approve before submission before the end of January. That's the current timeline.
Okay, thank you. And I have one last question. Health and safety, nobody's here who wants to take the question.
Sure.
What's the difference between staff and employees? Last line there, it says, except for several staff, employees have received new chairs.
Oh, no, he's using them interchangeably. That's sad. We've been slowly, over the last few years, ordering new office chairs, and he just got the last one.
So some employees have received them?
Yeah, most, all of the high priority ones, we have some really rough chairs. So we're replacing all the rest with our good old chairs now.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, at the risk of being frowned upon, I do have an update on McKenzie House. Mary Mercury, Matt McCrawford Construction today. The doors and door frames are 22-week delivery. And the HVAC parts are 36 weeks. So they're hoping they can at least get the interior work done. And it'll be closer to spring. The HVAC won't be quite as important at that point in time so that we can start bringing clients in before the process.
22 weeks to get doors.
Doors and frames, yeah.
But they can still cut them out and everything, don't they?
Oh, they're planning on being outsized in early January. Do you know the one?
36 weeks for HVAC. Is that one HVAC or?
Sorry?
Or what, what's the HVAC? Like, where is that going?
So when they redesigned it, they pulled several rooms out to have feeding areas, eventual works in that. What it does is create, it increases the volume of space that's open in those areas. And the HVAC that was in there was designed to handle the hallways, but not the additional space. So it's an upgrade to the HVAC to handle the volume of air.
But yes.
So if the doors go in, the HVAC is issue isn't going to keep it from being on to what?
No, because the HVAC doesn't affect the rooms. It only affects the common areas.
It is becoming a Grand Prairie hospital.
Eventually, that'll open as well.
Is there, like, what's special about these doors other than the size and the hedges and?
So it's a, you've probably seen them in some facilities where the door is 36 inches wide, but there's also a small, say, 8 to 12-inch piece on the side. So the door isn't ungainly or too cumbersome for the occupant to open. But then when they do need to move something, yeah, they can flip the other side open as well. And it gives them that, I think, 42 inches there.
And are they, do they have to be metal? Can they be wood?
I think that's a fire code issue with your rated doors.
But a solid wood door is?
But it's, the frames are like a, like a metal that they're going on.
I'm just thinking, there's got to be a contractor in La Crete that could probably take these things in a couple of weeks.
Actually, we've worked a little bit of millwork out of La Crete and Larry Hines as well. And most of their problem is supply chain issues. Sorry.
All right. Could I have someone accept the report if there's no more questions? Counsel Welke, all in favor, carry. Local business, 12-1, is that a local business?
Yes, because this is a, we did a one-year program with Loop Off Magazine last year, so this is their request for the debt program. My apologies that there's not a request for decision along with this. It's a completely fallen on my radar last week. They are looking to, at minimum, continue the arrangement from last year at $4,800 a year. However, they're also looking for council's consideration of doubling or tripling that. Just when council had gone through the budget initially, the decision had been made to make a similar agreement arrangement with the Echo Pioneer to sponsor local businesses or high-end, focus on local businesses.
I'll move it for information.
Should we at least write a letter saying that we are withdrawing our support?
I think we already did that in our pre, like, it's in the budget.
I, I.
You never do it.
For me?
We never go letters saying that we.
No, we made the decision in.
Yeah, but I mean, we need to inform them.
All responsible.
Give it an invoice to continue the existing through.
Isn't that good business?
It is. I don't think we send that to every contractor that sends us a request for work.
No.
But this has been something that we have been a part of.
Remove one-year contract, it's now a part of it.
I agree, just because these kind of things sometimes can just carry over automatically without canceling, so.
That's an internet subscription.
Well, I would, I have a strong feeling that it could occur with this as well, so.
I agree with Mr. Vines, like, the council is necessarily available.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, carry. High-level library board?
And Madam Mayor, Director Rolfe has the next three items on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So this first report is requesting, a request from the High-level Municipal Library Board for a new member. And I have included in the background a list of the current members and whether terms expire. So it's pretty straightforward. Their board has met and agreed to having Jeffrey Myers for a three-year term. And yeah.
Does somebody want to make that motion?
Make the motion.
Counsel Lebrun, all in favor, carry. Thank you. 13-2.
So for the balance of remembrance, we've had two new members that have come to the meetings, and they would like to be part of the committee. And haven't brought their names forward, as well as we realize that it's already been two years and two of our members have expired, so we needed to renew them as well. And we had Counsel Dwyer and Scott Chandler leave because they left the community. So the question that council appoint the members as recommended.
Cheryl is no longer a chamber?
I don't think so.
No. Cheryl Welke is no longer on the chamber? Okay, we had sent an email asking if she wanted her term renewed, so.
I guess I don't want to speak for her, but that should be clarified, I guess.
Yeah, it should be clarified with the chamber. Because the chamber might want to put a different representative on. Can you take that to your board?
Kind of, I believe, when she was asked, she had not long written.
Okay, so we have a, can we renew without her?
Well, I think what we could do is we could have her, we could amend the recommendation so that her term is renewed just as a member at large. And then we can figure out afterwards if we need a different representative, representation. Or if she doesn't want to be in the board, then we can bring it back and request that she resigned and put another person in.
So will you keep the, will you have a separate spot for that? Because you're going to, the chamber will want to appoint somebody themselves.
We'll reach out to the chamber.
Yeah, I can reach out to the chamber as well.
So can we table this to the next meeting? Yes? Can we do that, please? Nobody wants to do, make a motion? I'll make it. All in favor? I'm going to start making all the motions.
Thank you.
I didn't think it was a good deal.
What do you mean, I don't think it's a good deal?
I was going to say move forward with her being as a member at large.
Well, I don't have a problem with her moving forward either, but how many spots are going to be on the, on this board then? Is, was my question. Because the chamber has always been a member on the board.
She was going to approach the chamber.
We could table it for now. We're not going to have another meeting until January, so that's home.
Okay, all in favor, carry.
Curling Club lease. So the CEO and myself met with two of the board members of the Curling Club, just a general discussion to how things were going, because between the last two, three years, they've been partially shut down, shut down. And then with the startup this year, we had some issues with water purity. We have since gotten it straightened out. It was a little bit of a process. But in the meantime, the Curling Club had used water that was really salty, wasn't very good. And they had to spend a lot of time scraping the ice and redoing the ice. It took quite a bit to get it to where it should be. So part of my request is to ask council to look at, like, not, us not charging them profit over November. They did give me a list of all the hours they had put in in volunteer time. And they equated it to being quite close to the lease amount for those two months. So that was, that's basically what I'm looking for council. But just to provide some more information, we also looked at, when we're talking about the lease, is the Curling Club, with being, not really running the last couple of years, has been struggling a bit for stability. has been struggling a bit for stability. Um, so one of the things we talked about is, um, for their utilities, like they pay seventeen, seventeen percent of the gas and electrical at the arena, um, which has been mounting to about twelve hundred. So it's not really a financial difference to us currently. But with looking at the utilities and a little bit of that in the budget, they've been increasing quite a bit. I think it's really difficult for non-for-profit to budget when they're paying seventeen percent, so the amounts could be changing every year. And so they're basing what they do is like, we have to have like fifteen teams or twenty teams or whatever, just to meet the lease, basically. That's what they're running on, there isn't any extra funds. So we thought that that might give us stability if we did that for, um, three years. And then relook at everything, see what the actual costs were and then look at it again. Some of the other things we talked about was possibly like different ways for them to increase their membership and to increase revenue, which is like increasing revenue both. So we talked about possibly, you know, is it worth having a paid bartender and having the upstairs open more and, you know, generating more public and that kind of thing, we can make funds that way. Uh, we talked about advertising better, because there's a lot of people that aren't even aware that we have curled and that. So we talked about different strategies. So all in all, I think it was a really, um, a really productive, um, discussion. And, um, I'd like to recommend to council that we, um, uh, invoice the Curling Club for the twelve hundred for the leasing, twelve hundred for the, um, utilities and ice plant startup going forward. And that we exchange October, November for the amount of work that was done by their volunteers to get that curling up. Because the curling started late as a result of that as well, too.
Discussion, council?
Yes.
So is it typical that a group leasing that facility from the town would supply their own water to flood those sheets? Or should the preparation and maintenance of the ice sheets be part of their lease and the, the town would do that?
Well, they do look after their ice entirely, they have their own ice maker. Um, we don't, we do not look after that. And I've seen different, um, uh, there's different scenarios at, at different places. Some, some, with the municipality, they may look after the ice entirely. Um, sometimes there's a curling club totally on their own. Um, and they look after the building and everything. As far as the water, I guess that's what's kind of happened. We use a different water system, we use this real life system for, for ours, so the reverse osmosis system has just been used for them. And somewhere over the last three, four years, between changes of staff and COVID, nobody was really looking after it properly or taking total responsibility. So we have since then, I've worked with the arena manager and Heinz Rye has been very great. And we've spent a lot of time, we've gone over the whole system. We now have it marked as far as wood valves need to be turned on, we change up the filters, we're just changing the carbon heads. So like all these things are being done and everything's marked now, this needs to be done, this needs to be done. Should it have been done before? Absolutely. Whose responsibility was? I don't know, but it's done now.
So now it's kind of part of the arena system of ice skating and.
Between, we're both, well, all their volunteers and all our staff, we totally know how this is gonna work.
Oh yeah, that's, I just assumed it was.
It was always part of our water system, they only hauled the water in from West Frazler because our water was salty. This year and they had to scrape it all down because it hadn't been.
Well, it was our water that was down?
Yes, yes.
It was residual in the tank.
Yeah.
Because they had it curled for three years or two years, so.
So what happens, they dumped the water under the tank, but they hadn't checked all the lines and everything else. So when they refilled it from the reverse osmosis system, it not only did not fill up with great water to begin with, but it also, there was still water in the lines, it's kind of a combination thing. And we're not, we weren't testing it, and that's another thing we put into place, is to test the particles per million, to test the chlorine salt levels. The things we can easily do, has it been done? No, should it have been? Probably, but it is now. So those things are in place. So I can actually say our water now is purer than the water that we get now when we drink.
Oh, can we start drinking?
Yeah, I, I didn't know until I helped in Rainbow Lake, the curling ice is made with essentially distilled water. It makes a different ice for the curl.
Oh.
So it's a different system. I have no problem with this, I just would hate to, um, create a precedent by saying we're recognizing the value of volunteer hours to a specific amount then.
But I think the, the thing was that they, uh, put it all in and then it wasn't any good, so they had to take it all out. And I think that's the recognition of the values.
I would just rather CSW waive the fees for two months and the utility costs relative to what they priced it.
Yeah. I'm good with that. You guys good with that?
Yeah, I agree with that too. I, I don't think we want to acknowledge the, the volunteer hours, because that just opens all our rooms.
I think that would be probably their plea to council.
To, to put it in perspective, it is, yeah.
All right, all in favor? Of?
Who?
Didn't you do?
I suggested it.
Oh, I thought you moved it.
For the discussion. Sure, I'll move that one. Number one. That we waive the fees for remember to center, for all costs.
All in favor? Carry.
What? The lease, is that an ex, like, change?
Well, I just included it in here because it wasn't a monetary change really, so I just wanted to show council. Like normally it's an administrative function, but I just wanted to be transparent and just indicate what the change was, so.
So going forward, I'm a little foggy in this, my, uh, so they'll be paying twelve hundred dollars a month going forward, is that correct?
Twenty-fourteen or twelve.
Twelve and twelve.
Twelve. Yes, but is there a lot of users? Do they have their, do they hit their, kind of their?
No.
Yes, yeah, I think fourteen, fourteen team, yeah.
That's right.
The description is. Fourteen teams, right.
Yeah, that's good. But they're trying to plan some other things like trainings, which they haven't had for years. And like turkey throws, like different things to try and, and, and bring, increase the membership and having people up. Cause the turkey throw, I went out with fourteen, eighteen I think it is.
Won a turkey, so.
I won this Christmas.
Yeah.
So in the last week's echo, in, uh, forty years ago, I think it said the, uh, oillands curling box bill just happened and there was thirty teams forty years ago.
Yeah, Saturday.
I think the last time the oillands put it on, it quit at twelve, twelve or maybe fourteen.
So, excuse me, Madam Mayor, can I just get clarity on the motion? Were you adding an extra month? Was that what the motion was, instead of just October? Because I had asked for, um, October, November, like not to charge that.
Sorry, I just spoke, I said November, December, October, two months worth of the twenty-twenty-two lease.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thirteen-four, the Land and Property Tribunal training date. Is this just for information?
It's for information and any counselor that wishes to take a try, and just letting us be, you know. There's no cost other than the counselor's time. Is there a date you need to register them by center?
Well, there's a couple of ones there for the dates and what I put in the package was only the dates for new board members. I think Counsel Leifron sees his name now on the list. So those are the training dates, are you interested in taking?
Let's go figure out if those dates works better.
Anybody else interested?
Everyone is interested.
Interested.
Sorry, I think that's a recommendation from municipal fairs in all councils.
Well, Mark, Mark and I have done the subdivision and development field board, that's what we just did. And I can't sit on the board.
You can't?
No.
Why?
Because I'm on the, uh, the municipal planning commission.
However, if he decides he wants to switch gears, he can give up one and go to the other one. Your, your certification is good for three years, so.
Yeah, if I can't sit on.
No. All right.
But it's online.
So it was it?
It's online.
But, but at, at specific time, like you have to take it at that time, you can't take it on.
Nine to noon or something like that.
Yeah.
And then you have seven days to complete the online course.
Three hours each month.
They practically tell you what to study and you can, it's open for. Okay, could someone accept that for information, please? And if you want to take it, please let Sandra know.
Like, these time, like same, like we, we can decide this later. My life could change.
You're selling?
Genuinely.
Are you selling them?
So they're, just to know, some of those are new member courses and some of them are member refresher courses on ARD side?
Yeah, like I think you only have to register a month or so in advance, don't you? Does it, I can't say it was full, but I don't think we've ever come across. Seems it's online, does it matter how full it is?
I think it does. Like I know the, uh, the other training sessions through municipal fairs, I think they have a maximum limit. Because they want to bring people up into smaller discussion rooms at times.
Yes, the, the, the subdivision and development board was, I think, a maximum of thirty. It's all she would teach at one time, so, um, because she wanted to be able to do at least one off of those questions, I had so. I think there was twenty-three or anything, so on that one last one. That's a full day course. Eight fifteen in the morning, twelve fifteen in the afternoon.
So there's, there's two subdivision, subdivision and development.
Yeah, well, this is for.
Assessment review, right?
Yes.
The training dates for subdivision are January twenty-third and March thirteenth.
Yeah.
And the assessment review board are all those dates.
And the recommendation is that all elected officials take both of these?
No. Usually the, usually the assessment review.
Is the.
Well, they're both important, but we do have.
A direct priority, right? Okay.
And I'm sure if you go online, they'll say when you have to be registered if you want to take it in June. Or do you need me to remind you again?
Yes, probably.
Okay, could I have someone?
I'll move for information.
Thank you, all in favor? Carry. Thirteen, what do we have? Thirteen-five.
Madam Mayor, did you want me to outline this one?
Yep, go ahead.
So, uh, council on Thursday of last week, Boreal Housing Foundation Board met. Uh, and were presented with a couple of issues and they've made a request to the tri-council, to each council as part of a tri-council group to write to the Minister of, um, sorry, Seniors Community and Social Services. The, um, Boreal Housing has been incurring costs at McKenzie House since they occupied the building in August of twenty-twenty-one. And that, uh, but were unable to put residents in it because of the renovations due to the errors or outright misconstruction of the facility. So it could not be used as a seniors lodge or for any supportive living levels. So the Boreal Housing Board wrote to the minister and said that this isn't fair to either Boreal Housing or to the taxpayer of this area, because any deficit on lodges is requisitioned back to the municipalities. And could they, could he see fit to provide us with a grant to cover the costs that had been incurred by McKenzie House since, since it was turned over to Boreal Housing? So the minister did respond and provided the LAP grant. So a LAP grant is the lodge assistance program that they would have budgeted at any rate for the lodge when it was operating. And it's, I believe it's thirteen, thirteen fifty a day per resident, um, in, in the facility. So the total amount of the grant being provided is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the time that this facility is operated since it was turned to Boreal Housing. The deficit alone for twenty-twenty-two is estimated to be eight hundred thousand dollars.
It's nine hundred, isn't it?
It's.
Nine twenty-five, I think.
Well, that was our budget, but it will be a little less than, but yeah, it, well, we still have a month of operations still. So the burden over and above a hundred and seventy-five, which for one year alone is going to be close to seven hundred thousand dollars, goes back to the taxpayer.
For a facility that never operated, yes.
The history of this facility would make such a great six o'clock story for CTV, Global, and DC playing. It just keeps getting better and better, so. Like if we don't get a positive response to this, I just, I just think that we investigate that.
Make a good one to stick to media.
So like in his response, he says that it will be ongoing until such time, um, as the facility is operating, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that doesn't take into account what you're talking about. But would the ongoing payment cover, or is there still going to be a shortfall?
No, that, the, the ongoing payment, I believe what they said is, it works out to about a hundred and sixteen thousand a year. The annual operating costs, as the mayor said, is almost a million dollars a year. Which would be covered by rent and other.
But they will pay, the clients themselves will pay some.
Okay, but in this letter, we've got until April of twenty-twenty-three, but we now know that the facility will not be fully operational potentially for twenty-two weeks, which is gonna take us into.
September.
So I think the letter should be amended on the most recent information that we have available to say it's not gonna be, um, one point one million paid by local taxpayers, it's gonna be one point seven or one point eight, whatever number. I just think we should use the best information we have. And if we could even set out in there that, again, due to the decisions that they've made, that there's now a thirty-six week delay. A framework thirty-six week delay. I'm not sure if the other councils will agree with that, but, though I could, I mean, we have time, the letter's not dated until the seventeenth.
You haven't sent this to the other councils?
Oh yeah, yeah, I, I can update them, the county meets, um, Wednesday and Rainbow Lake meets on Thursday, so we can get them updated.
I agree with you, it should be a, this is ridiculous, it's just one.
I would hate to go back.
I'll show after a moment.
I would hate to go back to the minister in April and say, well, sorry, we've calculated, we need another seven year grant. We might as well just ask for it off the get-go and see what their response is and depending on that, I just. This will be like our payments from, uh, DRB, the DRB.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take more than a letter, it's gonna take a sit-down with the minister, I think, so that he fully understands.
I would agree.
Because I think this is just his bureaucracy and he's signing a letter. I don't think he knows what has gone on.
I would hope there's a file in his office and that the deputy minister has brought them up to speed.
All right. Put some, oh, you're making that motion?
Sure.
Deputy Mayor makes the motion to amend that letter, all in favor? Carry. Okay, so the RFD and the wage.
So, uh, Madam Mayor, um, just further to your discussions of the committee of the whole, um, we were representing the wage grid. Uh, we did add some information, on the October, uh, twenty-twenty-two, the consumer price index was six point eight percent higher year over year, driven mainly by energy prices, which were thirteen point six percent higher year over year and food prices of ten point three percent higher. As noted in the committee of the whole, the main changes in the salary and wage schedule are the, uh, three summer staff grids have emerged into one and our starting seasonal rate would now be nineteen dollars an hour. The sports operator, equipment operator categories have been merged, um, and the, so that the wages are the same in both of those and overlap continuity. Um, three categories, the finance office clerk, administrative development coordinator have merged into two finance administration clerk positions. Um, there's some name changes and then the, the discussed change to the directors grid with the change in director's vacation. We did present, um, a couple of tables there. The first table shows, um, what a one percent quota would do to the overall budget of the town, um, with two different scenarios. One would be the wage grid is presented, because the categories that were changed would not be given a quota this year. That's, that would have been included in that or calculated into that wage. Uh, or if you don't make the changes to those three categories, then there's a slightly higher effect on the cola. The directors grid, um, just outlined there from what they are, the current grid, eight being the highest step on any of our grids. Um, and what they, but that would be adjusted to with the new grid. And the overall cost because of decrease in vacation liability is thirty-five thousand dollars without change. So what administration's asking for is the adoption of the grid as presented and for council to discuss a cost.
Should this not be in camera?
There's no information on any of this. But that's why everybody's numbered in here, not named.
Whole discussion on the whole.
Yes, are you prepared to make a, nobody's saying anything, so I guess we need a motion?
Well, we, well, I think we can have discussion first, but, um. Obviously, everyone knows what's going on in the, in the economy at the moment and there's been a significant increase. And I think we have to recognize that of the white staff for going backwards in their position. Um, and in my mind, whatever cola adjustment we're going to include, there's got to be sort of a similar discussion when it comes to setting the bill rate. Um, because it's not just these wages that are going up, it's all costs, whether it's equipment, materials. Um, you know, we've all heard about the supply chain, the stuff that we were just talking about with McKenzie Housing. That's not unique to them. That's going to be us. Hopefully in the short term, hopefully this is a one-year blink, but the cost of living typically doesn't go down. So if we're not keeping up as, as it's happening, we're never going to catch up. For example, next year, if the cost of living goes up, um, two percent and we have two percent, um, they're still potentially three or four percent behind what happened this year. So, um, I, hopefully the six point eight is, um, something that's not going to be sustainable. I'm not suggesting that we go to that, but, um, I think we likely, in my opinion, have to do five percent, which would be three hundred and twenty-five grand.
Okay, so I feel like, uh, the federal government give with one hand and take with the other. Because you're suggesting that we raise the cola and then take it back with the mill rate.
But it's going to be shared amongst all.
Yes, again.
Probably all of us. And I'm not, depending on what the budget comes back, it's not a direct correlation because we have other costs and other expenditures and some things are going up more than others. But, um, hopefully there's a increase in the overall assessment that sort of impacts on some of this as well. But, you know, you can't just keep one stable and have increasing costs. That's how we get to the situation with our reserves that we were in a few years ago.
I think, I mean, this is a, this cost of living is, um, affecting like everyone else universally. Um, it's an anomaly and a hard time this time. I think that it's unrealistic to try to achieve an increase just based on the Consumer Price Index. I would be in favor of three percent or around half. Just, I, I don't think it would be an expectation across all organizations to actually try to achieve what, you know, what's going on. I think just it's a fact of life that in all industries and all organizations, you know, you're not necessarily going to get a salary boost directly correlating to the current cost of living or, or between consumer price like, like that number. So I would be more around the three, three and a half or. I do believe there should be something, of course, but, uh, but that, but that it's unrealistic to try to achieve close to the true increase that everyone is experiencing.
I totally agree with that comment.
Three percent.
So is this three percent correlated with, uh, with, um, directors that are getting, uh, an increase in salary as well?
The cola wouldn't apply to the former position, the seasonal position or the directors positions. That's why you have the two columns. One's a little cheaper and better.
Carrie?
Last week I would be a bit of a scrooge, but I agree, um, I think probably a little goes under, but, uh, three to three and a half.
I want to go with three and a half, so.
Well, what is it, three or three and a half?
Three and a half.
Better, three and a half, yeah. But I'll vote three.
What?
I'll vote, I'll vote three percent, three.
Three.
Three. Three percent. And that's the first time I've ever had a cola discussion without going in the camera?
Oh, generally it's, I'm certain that it actually affects a first.
Yeah, but it's, it's still a negotiated wage thing. All right. Um, interim budget.
Oh, Madam Mayor, can we get a motion?
Oh, sorry.
By the wage grid with the cola?
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carry it.
All right, Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn the floor over to Director Phillips, although the seniors half is here if you have any questions.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor and Council, just adding in your cola so I can give you guys a, an actual bottom line amount here. So the interim budget, um, interim operating budget was presented. Um, there, there was a few, um, changes before you, um, go ahead with any of your motions.
Before you begin, I noticed the line with the million dollars from McKenzie County, that's all going into operating?
Um, we, we don't necessarily put it all into operating. So what the decision is, is when capital, when we bring the capital budget, we'll decide how much. Normally we do about five hundred thousand is what we did last year is for capital. So when we bring the capital budget, we'll be, we'll be, um, transferring that to capital projects.
So that'll reduce this operating budget by that much?
Um, it'll, it, it won't really reduce it depending on, some of the projects are in there already, like some of the operating projects. So it all depends on how we want to allocate it out with the capital budget. So as of right now, I removed the NWSAR contribution of fifty thousand and added in the thousand. So there was that change from the interim that was presented. Um, and there was also, um, expenditures for the Canfor playground structures that were, um, moved to capital projects. So that was removed to fifty thousand and then a fifty thousand revenue added, um, for camper asphalt. So, and then also there was twenty-five thousand dollars for the fire alarm for the arena contracted services that was removed from expenses. Um, it was just duplicated in the project transfer. And in my error, I removed the MFTA membership. When we're having our conversations, I removed the fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars out of, um, the museum membership. So I added that back in. So with the changes that, um, I've captured, um, prior or after the interim went out to council is, um, an increase of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars to the surplus. Um, so right now, your bottom line at, um, the bottom of your page of fifteen, sorry, page fifteen of fifteen is, um, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So this is, um, funds that would go into our surplus, into general reserves. Um, and removing the three percent cola that, um, has just been decided, just give me one second. So you're looking at about four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars as your surplus going into.
Was that good?
Four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, um, going into general reserves. And as the interim operating budget is presented, that does not include any of the new assessments that we will be getting at the end of February and the franchise fees are not in there for the twenty twenty-three year. So we won't have any of those numbers come the final operating budget in March, April. And that's when we'll, we'll know what sort of revenues need to be raised to either stay at your tax rate, tax rate that you are, your mill rate that you are and how it'll affect, um, any more money that is going into reserves and for capital projects. And that includes that three percent cola that you guys just put in. And does not include any of the fee schedule rates that possibly might change when the fee schedule comes to council.
Questions? Do you want someone to move the interim operating budget then? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Here's one item on correspondence for, um, action and that was from a physician that would like to be compensated. In camera?
Yeah.
I don't know. Uh, he's, uh, I don't know if he's looking to be compensated or if they're just looking to see if we offer that, that, or physicians coming in.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the word, the way it reads is, is he was going to assist with, I believe it was Dr. Nelson, uh, part on, part off and travel from Calgary to, to do that, to do that filling. It's, uh, I haven't seen something like this in a long time where that request came from Medical Affairs. But just to note for council, we have a number of physicians who travel into our community on a regular basis and do not request accommodation.
I wasn't about to make this decision on my own.
I think, um, I think this just, it begs the greater question of, um, you know, what are municipalities doing to facilitate or make their locations desirable for physicians? Cause I know a lot of other municipalities have programs in place to entice physicians where there is some sort of monetary programs for this. Um, I would not agree to any kind of one-off situation like this. But maybe we need to look at what are, you know, what other Alberta municipalities are doing in this area. And we should maybe be, or look at or consider being competitive, you know, with, with some, you know, kind of innovative programs that, that other municipalities might be doing in this area.
Isn't five thousand dollars a day good enough?
Are you talking like?
Would they get to come in for one-offs?
Well, and that's, and that's the thing is like every single situation is different. And like wages and fee for services or salaries or whatever they are for physicians are all different. They're all, I think, you know, don't, well, we would, you know, negotiate it individually almost. I mean, there is, there is sort of some standards in place, but depending on specialties or that sort of thing. Or, or, or if a particular position is considered a critical need, um, there's, there's different scenarios like that, so. I mean, but regardless of that, if all of our neighboring municipalities kind of have sort of a support program in place for doctors, maybe we just look at that. Um, also considering, you know, what's the general appetite of the, you know, the public? Does, you know, do our, does our public here, would, would they be in favor of us putting in place a, a program to encourage doctors to come here? Cause that, you know, that's basically too what we also want to consider is, do, do our, you know, do, do our own residents want us to help out in this area? It's kind of a big topic, but I know other municipalities are doing things to encourage doctors to come to their locations.
I think for whatever reason, for the last however many years, we haven't had a problem with physicians here. And, um, do, are they not compensated already by the HHS? Will they come up here for?
There's, there's, it's individual.
Yeah, the specialists, sorry, the, the, the family physicians, John.
Okay, but what does this say to those physicians that have chosen to move here? Are we then going to extend and offer this to them like?
Those are the ones that I would only be favorable to offering them.
Yeah, like it's a.
Not people that travel in and out.
Right, yeah, it's a, it's a.
Like I, I think most attractions to communities that I have heard about and talked with other mayors about is, is an attraction to come and stay and live.
Right.
Not to come in and leave in a month and come back in a month.
Well, exactly, and that's what, that's what I'm saying is, you know, you know, looking. I guess I, I, I think about this with a, a lot of things is basically, you know, what are all the other guys doing? Um, have we looked at what other municipalities, you know, in, in the, in Northern Alberta are doing like themselves? Not HHS or anyone like that, but the municipalities themselves, like in this area. Um, I would just be interested in seeing, you know, what, what kind of, you know, incentives? And, and, and again, if it, you know, if it applies to all, you know, maybe, maybe they, maybe they, uh, help support just the other health initiatives that, you know, make that, make that, that area better. Maybe it's, you know, on a per doctor basis, maybe it's all doctors, I don't know, but others are.
But this is something that is beyond this, like that's a huge.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm saying like I, yeah, I don't necessarily support a one-off thing, but, but that we look at this type of.
Isn't that a part of the thing?
That's, that's the thing, if we, if we check around with others and they all say, well, you know, it's, it's not the responsibility of the municipality.
Well, that's always been high level stance.
Yeah.
Like it's not.
But I also agree with, uh, Deputy Mayor in that, um, I don't think, I know we're always short. But I don't get the feeling that the situation here is as bad as it is in some places. Like it's actually, you know, we have a great collection of physicians here and, you know, and many, you know, long-term.
And my thing is if we're going to attract them here with some incentive, it should come more than just from the community of high level because, you know, Paddle Query Access is.
Right.
Rattay, Little Red, McKenzie County.
Might be a tri-council to, um, discussion.
Yeah, yes.
Do the physicians out here not receive a benefit already and that the clinic is provided for them? They don't pay any rent there, is that correct?
The, the rent is minimal, yeah. It, it is subsidized by HHS, it has other supplies.
But do you remember when the old clinic was at its end of days? Obviously I wasn't on council at the time, but weren't they asking for like one point eight million to have the town build in the clinic?
I don't know. They, I thought they had to pay thirty percent over at this hospital.
Uh, they did in the old clinic when they moved into the hospital because HHS took over the running of the medical clinic. They, it is subsidized. There's other clinics, these. There's other clinics, these doctors happen to ask to pay, uh, an amount. Other clinics, McCree, Typerry are free, HS, so it's, it's, it's a scratch.
Again, that, that even is, is, there's no standard in place for, for that, amongst the HS even.
Yeah.
So there's no benefit for doctors coming to the north, there's, there's no?
Most of the benefit, speaking, having worked for the doctors for several years, is that there is, there's very little overheads in this clinic. So they're, um, nothing cuts into that bottom line, and they do very, very well up there. Um, it's, it, it is an area that makes them, even on a part-time basis, they make a very good salary.
But is, is it subsidized for being in the north or?
No, right, generally not. Some of the specialists are, but the family practitioners.
I mean, is there's, if there's billing differentials for geographic location?
Yeah, but that's, almost starts right outside of Edmonton.
Oh, okay, so, so.
Because I believe Whitebird has that as well, right?
Yes.
What is, Counselor Welkey pointed out there, there's a lot of individual, one of, who was a psychiatrist that was providing, um, children's services through the school division, and they pulled his travel and he no longer comes here. I, I just, this is like ambulance, this is like all the rest, like, health services is not a municipal responsibility. This is a huge slippery slope that we start doing this for one, we have to do it for everyone. And in my mind, I agree with the mayor. If anything, we'd be doing this for people that live here as opposed to, or looking to come in for six months a year? In my opinion, anyway.
No, Mayor, maybe one thing we could arrange for is to have that at Medical Affairs make a presentation to tri-council on, you know, how they make these decisions, how they do their recruitment. Um, because an actual recruitment job, recruitment assistance may be of more value to the community because it subsidizes the physicians. Uh, also then they could talk to the, why specialists are paid a different rate than the family physicians.
Okay, let's address this baby first. Can we write a letter and say, no, that's not something we do? Could someone make up a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Counselor Jesselman, all in favor? Carrie? Is there anything you want to talk about with the correspondence for information? If not, can?
Um, I may have just missed it in the last month, but, um, did, did we discuss or recap that Invest Alberta tour that happened up here?
Did we discuss it?
Yeah. Well, what, what happened?
They went away.
Did they even come?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had a meeting with them.
Okay, how'd it go?
Um, it was okay, but it wasn't.
Earth-shattering.
Earth-shattering, like Invest Alberta is looking for big investments. I guess the one thing we walked away with, and Haley can speak better to this than I can, is, um, how to get our properties, do you want to talk to it? How to get our properties ready in case a big gun comes here with lithium or something? Do you want to talk to them, Carrie?
Yeah, sure. Um, so, uh, Mayor is correct, um, Invest Alberta is definitely looking for much larger projects. Uh, I have met with them a couple of times, part of them coming up to high level. And a lot of it is, um, they, they need big job creation. That's, uh, one of the ways that they measure success. Um, so, you know, did, we did have a good conversation about some of the challenges and opportunities that exist at high level. Um, I think we're better off working with the Government of Alberta to improve our data. So if an opportunity does come up, we have information ready to go. Um, you know, whether it's, um, a site that would be considered versus us applying or throwing sites in for every single opportunity that comes up. And it's a whole, you know, bunch of work and time that we put into it, and it would never be considered anyway. Um, so working with the Government of Alberta on doing that, which is in our implementation plan, from our strategic plan for Q1, that's fair. Um, so certainly with our .33 FTE active position there, um, that, that can take on a bit of that work too. Um, so I'm not saying that we don't consider Invest Alberta, it's just the opportunities that come up. For us, maybe few and far between. Regionally, there's probably more, um, opportunity there. Um, but, I mean, they're definitely good contacts to have, like they put out a lot of, a lot of good information. Um, we just have to dig into it a bit more to make it specific to us, so.
Yeah, so they're, they're more or less looking for big industrial projects.
Whatever happened with that pee processing?
They're still going down that road over in the Cree area.
Okay.
But I mean, those are the type of projects that the town of high level can't really have land prepared for because those are beyond our capability. Tell a pee processing plant in town. Anyways, any other questions about the, uh, could I have someone accept it for information, then please?
I'll do that.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carrie? Could somebody, uh?
I just have a question, Madam Mayor. For the motion for the interim operating budget, was it with amendments, amendments presented, including the 3% COLA? Okay, just wanted to double-check so I could make sure my papers are right, thanks.
Did you find that numbered for me yet?
The, oh, the number that you asked for in the beginning, yes, I did.
All right, so could I have us move into camera, please? And just. What? Oh, Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carrie?